All right, let me do a pulse of the group. How are we doing? How are you feeling about the pace of how we're doing the outcomes? The yeses and noes, the modifications? How can we speed it up a little bit? Understanding that this is important. Do we slow it down or do we speed it up? Thoughts? You thought pace was okay?
That was a long one.
It was a long one?
The other ones are shorter.
Okay. Is noon or probably? I don't know. It's noon. 10:00 and that one took us an hour and 10. Okay, just keep in mind as well that don't get too, too far into the weeds, right? I think that'll be helpful as well and just being able to italicize words and wordsmith it later and just think of it on the upper end of it, right? Okay, let's go ahead. Economic vitality. All right, so under here we have... We have economic development policy. So we'll start with that one first. Encouraging, encourage the development. Now, it says encourage, not encouraging. Encourage the development of a diverse economy through technical and financial assistance to businesses that invest in the community to enhance the lives of our residents. We'll do that one first. The others are business community, San Marcos as a destination, education and workforce development and intentional growth. All right, so economic vitality. Encourage the development of a diverse economy through technical and financial assistance to businesses that invest in the community to enhance the lives of our residents. Thoughts? Comments? Is it capturing and aligning the output? Okay, I see thumbs up. All right. Business community. Actively support and attract diversified business activity, including local and emerging small businesses to thrive and expand in our community. The output. Mayor?
The only thought there is would it be better to say actively attract and support? Nobody else likes that, I'm okay.
You have a comment? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Was the intention enough that we're supporting more than we're attracting?
I think it was a matter of, you know, how to convey to the community that we're not attract first.
What are the comments? All right, we'll move to the next. San Marcos as a destination. Under this, we have expand and support tourism programs to promote local commerce in the hospitality industry.
The mayor had brought up that we have not put the word family in any of these so far. This might be one where, you know, we talked about being a destination for all types. I'm just throwing the word family out there because we haven't used it yet.
Yeah, because you've got your conventions, conferences. You've got, you know, people that come to outboard, maybe the single or couple, and then families. And I don't know how we can kind of group that up, but I think I've noticed we don't have family clean or pets anywhere in here. And I think that if we look at family here, that would be good. And I think that they do that, but I think it's good to have it here.
Can you put family to support or support family-friendly tourism programs? Or family-friendly local commerce? Stick it in there somewhere. But it's not only family-friendly.
Yeah, but I agree. That's one of them, but not the only one. Throw something out here to get us started, but if we, and we're going to put an and in commas. But we've got local commerce, we've got the hospitality industry, although that's the only one we're calling out. I'm not sure about that. And family activities. That's not quite it, because that sounds like we're going to provide what the activities are. But I just, it's something we can, you know, underline for coming back.
And also remember that we always have the strategies where we can hit those. I mean, if it's important that it's in the verbiage, it's one thing, but we're hitting it in the strategies.
I don't know that everyone in the public is going to get down to the strategies, and I want them to see families somewhere in what we have done so far.
The only thing I will say is that this is aimed, when you look at the front, it's aimed at tourism. So I think that the thought of families is really important, but it's more than tourism, because we're looking at... So I'm wondering if maybe there's another statement that we need to have that's not, that's beyond tourism, you know what I mean? Yeah, something that's there, Mayor. So I feel you, I think it's important to put it in there. It's just a matter of is it, we're trying to fit something that really is aimed at a different intent right now on this one. And it could be both. It could be that we put it in both places.
I'd also like to add support responsible tourism, which would bring in all the educational things that we do for the safety of the river and the cleanliness and non-littering around the community.
And I think what Ms. Reyes was saying is correct. I wasn't necessarily saying family here. It was just something that was jumping out at us that we hadn't thrown in anywhere yet. And just trying to keep that in mind. Yeah, yeah, and, you know, just as we're going through this, it was more of my wanting to kind of keep in the back of my mind that it could be intentional something.
And I agree, it needs to be in there somewhere. It's just a matter of what's the right place that everybody feels it fits.
Other comments?
I don't see that we have anywhere else that we say, and support this particular type of industry. So why are we doing it here? I can see why it might have gone in there after they got hit so hard after, you know, during COVID and all the other stuff, but I'm not sure why supporting the industry is going to be in here that we're doing for the public. And if we support all this other stuff, it will benefit the hospitality industry, because that's what's going to happen, but that's not the goal.
I think it goes back to what you said there, is that put a period, you know, and if it's all-inclusive there, that it's just local commerce. It's local commerce, yes. And so I think, yeah.
Great dialogue. What are the comments? Education and workforce development. Work with partners to facilitate opportunities for job training and educational programming for residents. Comments? One's going twice.
We did this on another one, I don't remember which. Somebody said, like, the work with partners is how you get there, but the point is that we're facilitating opportunities. And you put the partners down. And this is where facilitate's good. So just, it's the work with partners too that's going to move. Oh, okay, facilitate opportunities with, no, I won't push the partners down. And how we pour that in there, I don't know, but... Facilitate opportunities for job training and educational programming. I don't know that we need to say for residents. We can take that out. Through partnerships or something. Or through partners, I, it doesn't matter. But see, this is like what we did on the other one. What are we doing? And this is how we're doing it. Which even that through partnerships could be one of the items underneath. Maybe we can underline through partnerships and think about that.
Self-facilitate opportunities for job training, educational programming.
That's what your folks that need that want to see is right there. How we get there. Is minor areas of getting it done.
And agree with you there. I think the main thing by wanting to put partners in there in some way is just because, again, that was defining the role, the city can't do it, you know? So I think through partnerships helps.
Self-facilitate opportunities for job training and educational programming through partnerships. Other comments around the room?
I think that's good, because there was really not a whole lot. We do on our own any education and workforce development. Almost everything we do is through partnerships. I think that's good.
Final comments? Pretty clean. Any additional? Intentional growth. One of my favorite words is intentional. All right. Expand and diversify our tax base to lessen the financial burden on existing taxpayers. Yes, go with me.
Some will read that and say, you're going to take anything and everything and slam it next to my house. You know, we've got people wanting to come in and do heavy commercial next to residential neighborhoods. I think if we're going to say intentional growth, it's not just that we need to... And I know we've got protect neighborhoods somewhere else, but that right there sounds like it's just dollars and we're not being careful and we're calling it intentional growth.
Should we say prudently or strategically?
I'm sorry?
Prudently or strategically expand and diversify.
That won't help those that are going to be concerned about that.
That would help.
Working on it. Yeah, and I'm fine if we just make a note and use the words that Mr. Metallian used and we think on it, because, you know, we can spend five minutes on it and still not land. But I just, I would like for us, anybody else concerned about this? Am I the only one? Okay, okay.
And I think the mayor's right about that, that a lot of our community members are going to look at an intentional growth. They're okay for the growth as long as we preserve what we have, right? And I don't know if you necessarily put the word preservation in there, but just reading that as it is, it's, you're not really talking about what we already have. People are going to be worried about that.
And I think that the intent here, talking about intentionality, was that it wasn't just everything that comes at us. It's things that we're doing in a more deliberate way. And so if there's a different word that captures that, just trying to help you all understand the context in which it was proposed. It wasn't just to grow for growth's sake. It was to do things that really are purposefully done and thoughtfully done.
I agree with you, but the words weren't up there.
So...
I was just going to add, with the use of existing, that kind of takes away attracting new development, you know, in the city. So if we just said, mention word on taxpayers. So it's on all taxpayers.
And here?
When I see intentional growth, I'm looking at the geography. What are we putting where? And when I see intentional growth, I'm not thinking dollars. So that was my whole problem with this to begin with, is intentional growth doesn't mean just new tax base. It means how we're going to grow. Otherwise, we just say growth or reduce burden on taxpayers. Intentional growth means we're figuring out what goes where. And that's not in the words.
All right, so how it reads now, diversify and strategically expand our tax base to lessen the financial burden on taxpayers.
Let's just underline strategically expand and figure it out later.
Got it.
Yeah, this is not going to go over well with a lot of people.
Some more thought about this a little bit later as we think about it. Okay. All right. Yes, can we go back to business community?
So I guess here we specify, you know, actively support and attract diversified business activity. Then we say including local and emerging small businesses. What about medium and large businesses? Are we not soliciting them to come into to be a part of economic vitality? More likely the larger businesses will pay higher wages than local and small businesses. So that's the only thought I had here, so.
My guess is that whenever we talk about attracting businesses to come in, it's always big ones, and that this was to encourage, to note that it's not just the big ones. But maybe we can say businesses of all sizes or something. I get where you're going, but I think this was to make sure that we didn't go with what people are going to think, which is it's only the big ones.
I understand. I would just, I understand, I missed the word including. So including means?
No, but you make a good point.
So on the intentional growth, is the problem, Mr. Gleason and Mayor Houston, that you feel the intentional work? Or do you think the supporting statement itself doesn't really say what it needs to say?
Intentional growth and the statement underneath don't match up. They're not in harmony.
And what do you like better? Do you like the statement better than, because we can take off intentional, it's more purposeful growth or something that is more, we can still find a better word than that, but...
Just say lessen the burden on taxpayers. That's what you're, that's what it is. Intentional growth, again, to me, means the amount. What, are you putting the right things in the right places? That's what that says to me, so that...
So maybe lessen the burden on taxpayers or something is the word choice for the outcome versus?
Does that love to match?
And that's what I'm saying, is that if none of us are tied to the intentional growth part. So if you like the statement, then let's change the outcome, you know? And if this is what it needs to say, we're fine with that, because the intent was really trying to take a balanced approach of saying, we need to always, yes, we're going to grow and we need to do that to diversify our tax base, but it's really about trying to make sure that we make things okay for people who are here already, so we don't continue to tax the same people over and over again.
But that just says, oh, you're going to, you're going to take every heavy commercial? That's what I'm reading into that first one?
So we have here as output lessen taxpayer burden, diversify and strategically expand our tax base to lessen the financial burden on taxpayers.
Is this one of those items that belongs underneath something else and shouldn't be at this level? For the lessen the burden on taxpayers?
We can, we can look at that. I think the only reason that we put it here was because for those folks who may think, okay, it's all about the city expanding and that we're going to forget about the existing people, you know? And so when you have the economic development policies that look at, you know, attracting people, as San Marcos has a destination, the business community development policy, the economic development policy, it was just to make sure that everybody knew that it was really about keeping the end goal in mind of trying to lessen the burden on the taxpayers. You know, having a stronger, more economically vital community, but also not forgetting about the people who are here.
But I hear from people saying, are you just taking anything and...
And that was the point of this. It was meant to offset that, but again, we've heard those aren't the right words, and so we don't want to use the wrong words. So it's just, but that was the intent of it, was just to try to have that more balanced approach.
Yeah, I think this still needs a lot of work.
You know, I actually kind of like the bullet point of intentional growth, because so much of what we hear from everybody is we're just having growth for the sake of growth and putting it everywhere. So I like the word intentional, we're being very intentional where we put it, how we develop it and all the things that go into those development agreements or even a local zoning change, right? So I actually like that, I just don't know how you put that into the tax base, but also the sense of place, like the location of that.
Which is it? Exactly, make sure it's out. What we accept, where it goes. For me, that's the intentional growth.
That's exactly right, because, you know, when we talk to constituents, they're like, well, we're being intentional, we're trying to be sustainable, we're trying to be environmentally friendly, we're trying to be, you know, good jobs and things like that. That's intentional growth. And that could mean both for our sake of encouraging the policies, but also going out and actively seeking those, right? So I kind of like intentional growth on here. I just don't like how we only talked about the tax base.
So what if it's, so that's a thought? Or we could just take intentional and just have it be growth? But then under that, you would say intentionally expand and diversify our tax base to lessen the financial burden on taxpayers? And then add kind of a little bit of the thought that you talked about, but...
This might be one where less is more, you know? Where maybe we don't even get into the tax portion of it. We just talk about, talk about a little more just intentional growth. And maybe, you know, I just hate to have it only be about the tax base.
Because intentional growth is also which companies make sense to come to San Marcos. If they're wanting an incentive, we may say no to somebody that just doesn't fit into our community. I mean, they won't come, but yeah, there's several aspects to intentional growth. This is, you know, if we're talking about, if we're talking about incentives, you know, who is it that we want to welcome? Who is it that we want to encourage? Where do they go? But are we all on the same page as to where we're kind of wanting to go? And I can give you, I can give you all the time to figure out how to work all of this out.
I think so. I think the other thing is just, you know, this may be another one where we just take off the part where it says to lessen the financial burden on taxpayers. You know, if it's just diversify and intentionally expand our economy, then again, that shows intentionality. And so maybe that's where that less is more does come in possibly. If you don't think it hits what the same hand points.
I still would like to tell the public that we're being choosy.
Chosey is one thing, but this says you're going to lessen the tax burden. You're going to lower tax rates if you get a good business coming in town. We have to not be...
And we haven't done that yet.
That is not it yet.
Well, and that's exactly why I didn't like the change in that bullet point, because of not just, you know, we're talking about growth, but you know, what about utility issues, water, wastewater, all those other things? All these burdened taxpayers, so that's why that one wasn't... Yeah, exactly.
We have a comment.
Also, if you don't want to repeat intentional and then intentionally, you could change intentionally to deliberately.
I still think that this is a lot of work and I'm willing to give you all the time to figure it out, but that's good.
Is there something that we can deliberate between? I mean, a growing economy can be more warehouses or things that are delivering a prosperous economy? Because we've had great growth in distribution, if, you know, but we, you know, what do we...
It's manufacturing.
Yeah, manufacturing, but what do we need to get that prosperous economy there? Because that is the one outlier. All those charts they're showing us, our peer city, the biggest outlier was the median family income and stuff.
Agreed. So, yeah, both, but Mr. Prythers is right. It's part of our intentional growth is we want to make sure it's bringing good jobs, not just tax base.
What was the rationale that Charlie went up to lessen the burden on taxpayers? I kind of liked it up there.
Didn't want to get rid of it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I didn't want to get rid of it either, because that is part of the idea of bringing it to growth. You know, the manufacturing side brings it, you know, we have less services we have to provide, brings additional revenue. And so I think that's part of the intentional growth. It was just that it was the only one as well.
Misunderstood. Thank you.
Other comments on this? Is this where we say we need to come back to this and do a little bit more research on? Okay. So right now, as it stands before research, additional research, intentional growth, diversify and deliberately expand businesses for our prosperous economy.
Yeah, and this gets back to, you know, not just the businesses and the growth, right? It's so much of any part of the city that grows, right? The transportation needs and the housing needs and everything else. So I think this is one way to have it.
I do like, I think it was Mr. Prythers, the prosperous economy, because that talks about the wage scale and a lot of things. Those, those good questions.
All right, so here is our next. We have public safety, core services and fiscal excellence, core government services. Ensure operations are funded for delivery of high-quality, community-focused programs and services. Under these, we also have community safety, financial management, workforce recruitment and retention, support services, infrastructure management. So specifically under the core government services, ensure operations are funded for delivery of high-quality, community-focused programs and services. Thoughts with this?
Why are we talking about ensuring operations are funded? Is this to make sure that we prioritize and set a tax rate that will cover it? Because we don't have that yet.
Yeah, it's meant to make sure that we are prioritizing core government services, the things that we have to fund, not the things that are just, that would prohibit us from being able to maintain service levels that we would need to, to provide. I mean, if it's public safety, for example, if we don't have a tax rate that supports that, if we don't have a tax rate that supports the ability to hire, you know, IT people that need to be able to support, you know, the technology that the officers use. So that was the thing, is making sure that was the main thing that we keep our focus on always.
Right, and I know in, as Phil is running the city, but still, somewhere along the line, what I had talked about, I would hope that at some point we get a commitment to fund our police and fire in X number of years. I'm still looking to see where that is in this plan. And is it under here? And it's kind of hidden.
So that's our intent, is to actually do it in two ways. So when you get into the community safety, which will be the next outcome that we'll go into, that was the one where it talks about public safety services. And you'll notice the word prioritize. And that even caused some discussion during our director's team, you know, wanting to know that, hey, are other employees going to see prioritize and think that they're not going to be prioritized? and think that they're not going to be prioritized in the same way? But we heard this council talk very clearly about that being a priority. So where we would see this is that when we come back with the strategies, it would be about funding and implementing, you know, a plan for the staffing for fire and police. So that's where that would go under, Mayor, when we bring it back to y'all, is it would be a strategy under that bullet. We'll also, during budget policy, we'll also ask y'all very specifically about what you're wanting to prioritize for this upcoming budget FY24 that you're going to be planning for. So it can be in two places. It'll be in your visioning, but it'll also be in your budget policy if council so chooses. Correct.
What are the comments? Core government services. Ensure operations are funded for delivery of high-quality, community-focused programs and services.
And if the council is so inclined, the other thing could be, you know, we haven't talked about the order of these, but if we wanted to put public safety, core services and fiscal excellence as the first one of these, you know, when we list them, those are the core things, you know? If you want a safe community, you want core services funded, then that could be something that we would even list first before we go into some of the other ones. So just some thoughts there. No, it'd be, I'm saying first goal listed on your strategic plan.
Other comments? What other comments are in the room? We can move on this one to the next. All right, we have community safety. Prioritize and enhance public safety services so that our community is resilient, safe and secure.
So I like the word resiliency. Safe is dubious. What does safe mean? And secure, I don't even know how we would secure San Marcos. I don't know what we're securing it from or, I don't know. So I'm going to opine. I love to collaborate. And I wish Councilwoman Garza were in here to sit and hear this. But I love collaborating. And I also want to somehow include building trust with our community as a fundamental part of what we're doing. So I rewrote this and just suggested collaborate to prioritize and enhance public safety services while building trust with our community. I think that's more measurable than securing San Marcos, so.
And one of the things I think that could be a strategy here, thanks Chief, I think that's an important component. You know, transparency leads to trust. And we're working really hard to try to provide more information when and where possible. And so I think that, you know, even during the discussion that's going to come up on the meet and confer item, you know, the staff is also going to provide a presentation that helps to provide more information to our public to gain a further understanding in regard to, you know, why we've done what we've done in the years past and how that has helped us as a community in different ways. So I think, you know, there may be still some philosophical differences, and we acknowledge that. But we're going to do our best to try to be transparent and try to work on building that trust collaboratively because it's going to take all of us. I think the other thing that's going to be really important, and thank you to Chief Stevens for bringing me the information, is that last year, I keep saying last year, but it's really last budget process of current year, we had $1.2 million in additional capacity for new programs and services that were recurring expenses. And based on the information that I received is that it's going to take like $3.9 million for some of the positions, you know, for the public safety positions to be hired. And so is that just for fire chief? Or is that for police as well? That's for both. So when we talk about this and we talk about numbers and prioritizing, that very well could be that there's nothing but that that we really have capacity to fund. And that is going to trigger some operational things that we'll need to just consider. And this is within the existing tax rate that we're talking about. So there's just going to be some hard decisions we're going to have to make. And just want to make sure that council's very well aware that that's looking at almost $4 million to fund the staffing that is required by the staffing plan. So over the next four years, it could be just funding that if we want to get this done in four years.
One comment, Chief Stan. Did you want to do another reiteration of the statement of the output?
I have a question. When you talk about enhancing public safety services, are you saying more officers or things of that nature?
I think it's inclusive, to use a word that we've used a lot. It's going to be both personnel, it's also going to be new programs, it's going to be the collaboration with Councilwoman Garza. I want, it was important for me to use the word collaborate and building trust within the community. So we changed that to reflect it. But collaboration is, and I also don't want to communicate that this is just our issue. It's place and fire issue. This is a community issue. We're dealing with social issues. So everybody has to have a seat at the table.
Sorry, I know this is a really important issue that gets discussed a lot. I think the other thing that the chief is committed to, and I know we all have committed to, is having accountability as part of that trust. So not only is it transparency, but it's also accountability in order to build that trust with our community. And, you know, we know that we didn't get here overnight, and it's going to take time for us to do that. And it's going to take some, you know, real action steps towards doing that. But accountability and transparency are two of the pillars that we're really looking at in terms of how to get there.
The one thing I would add to that is in football, they talk about a pursuit angle. And if you're not running to where the player's going to be, by the time you get there, they're not there. Those are, those are numbers, at least from our study, that were from 2020. That information's already three years old. And by the time you're adopting the next budget, it's four years old. And we've already have acquired land for the next six stations. We have eight sites secured. You'll need six of those. And you're going to need those in the next 50 years, based on your population projections. If you take five or 10 years to get to where you needed to be in 2018, when we gave that data to the consultant that produced the report in 2020, you're just further behind. And that's unfortunately, I'm not blaming this council, but unfortunately, that's what you inherited. You inherited decades of bad management. It just, we're that far behind. And the only way to catch up is going to be to make some incredibly difficult decisions. And that's why I asked Ms. Reyes to give you that number. Because if you just fund police and fire, last year she had $1.5 million. As the council requested her to lower the rate by a cent, y'all ultimately chose to allow her that extra cent. And we made some headway. Instead of 27 for fires, 24 is still 10, I believe, for police. It's still a total of 34 positions from two years ago. That's three plus years of every dollar of new money that she has. And so if there isn't an influx of money from somewhere else, if you reach that by 2030, you'll likely be there and down the barrel of police on our side. A whole nother 15 people for Station 8 will be justified by then. And so I just want to explain to council the pursuit angle and how long out you plan to take to implement this. You're probably going to need more police officers, more firefighters by then as well. I know we're seeing that in EMS. They've already added an ambulance, and they need to add at least one, if not two, more in our city. And we agreed to fund them at what they would make if the ESD rate were applied to our, at the origin valuation. And so that's coming as well because the population and their volume just continues to grow. And they've already turned off a lot of their interagency transfers.
Yeah, just as I'm watching this and hearing the conversation, I think you kind of need to consider this too, is there's really not a positive defined outcome, right? So we're prioritizing enhancing the services. And I get that we have trouble with resilience, safe and secure. But if all we're doing is creating more programs and putting more services out there, we don't have a result on the back end of that. We didn't accomplish what we're trying to do, right? So I don't know how to define those three words any better than anybody else in the room. Just pointing out that you're not actually getting to where you need to be with this statement unless you just assume that by prioritizing building trust and having additional services, you get there. So just going to be thinking about that.
Yeah, I think you're right. And I'm going to go back to what Jesus said. The poor is always going to be with you. Crime is always going to be with us. So effectiveness depends not on zero crime. It depends on how well did you collaborate? How well did you build trust? How are you perceived within the community? So believe it or not, within our services, that's what defines success versus having zero numbers because we're just never going to get there, to your point.
I agree with you on that, Chief. But I do think Mr. Roth has a point a little bit that yes, it's hard to say we're always going to be safe and secure. I do think resiliency is something that, yeah, you're not going to be perfect, but we're going to at least help that, right? So I think resilient kind of made sense in there. But I don't know how you leave that a standalone, right? You know, I don't think that makes sense to only have it in there. But resilient to me is a goal. Like you're trying to make it more resilient. You're not always going to make it safe and secure. But I don't know if that's a standalone goal, right?
Other comments?
I don't know if this is the appropriate slide, but, or how we would fit it in. But in terms of like, how do we get there? Putting like more, I guess, narrow or concrete targets? So like crime prevention or like crime reduction? I don't know. But yeah, it's just hard to capture. Because to Mr. Gleason's point, like we will never fully be safe and secure, but we could always be building on resiliency. So I don't even know. I think we do a lot to build resilience, but.
So something to think about on this. If we keep this broad and something like it is now, then staff's going to take that and recommend implementation strategies like X percentage reduction in violent crime or whatever, kind of like we did last time.
Go ahead, Diane.
I think once you add resiliency, then you almost have to change with to within our community.
I actually really like that because it implies like it's within. So that means trust on our neighbors' ends. That means trust on like, you know, firefighters, cops, city. I like that. Yeah, like a collaborative approach. I take it.
So we have community safety. Collaborate, prioritize, enhance public safety services while building resiliency and trust within our community. Other comments? We have financial management. As it reads, improve the city's fiscal capacity to meet our community's existing and future needs through strategic financial management. Financial management.
I think this is another one. If you haven't proven there, it kind of states that we haven't been doing it maybe, you know? Just worry about that messaging a little bit because staff did such a good job the last couple of years during COVID and the turndown that, you know, we can always improve on it. I think it's just implying that we may not have been doing it. Maintain, yeah.
Maybe continue to improve or maintain or something like that. Because I think, you know, when you look at what Dan Wedd Miller talked with the council and all of us about yesterday, you know, there are cities that will put a goal out there of, you know, us being triple A and double A right now. And there are two more areas that we could grow. And so if we wanted to improve and hit, you know, a higher bond rating in order to provide for lower interest rates and our buying, you know, try to increase our buying power towards that end, there is some improvement that can be made. So that, I think that was the thought process was is that, you know, we don't always have to stay at double A. We can try to even move further. And of course, it would be a thoughtful thing that would take time to do it. But I don't see any reason why we can't, given the things that we have done as a city to make sure that we stay financially, you know, solvent and resilient.
I was thinking of the verb of expand. But I could be wrong there too. So instead of, to me, maintaining is we're going to stay status quo. We don't want to stay status quo. So I can understand improve. You're going this way. Expand, you're going up as well. So the word improve is not there.
And I wasn't meaning that. There's always improvement in financial management, right? And I wasn't trying to pick on that. I was just thinking of someone reading that saying, oh, they need to improve. You know, we all know that. Exactly. So it wasn't that I was necessarily, it was the worst word. It was just kind of, you know, how we started out on that.
So we have financial management. Expand the city's fiscal capacity to meet our community's existing and future needs through continued strategic financial management. Any additional comments? Thoughts?
What does that say?
I did question the use of fiscal capacity because I don't know how, it's just an interesting term. And I don't have a better word for it, so I didn't bring it up. So I think that the way this is good.
Did you like the word improve or expand? Do you like expand? Got to put you on the spot.
Meet our communities existing in future needs through continued strategic financial management.
Yeah, that, from my perspective, the city's fiscal capacity is really more of an economic development thing and less about, yeah, financial management. So by removing that, it's just speaking to the financial management of what the city does, or again.
When I read expand fiscal capacity, I would interpret that. And I think a lot of people would interpret it as increase the budget, raise taxes.
Maybe just what we have with just meet our communities existing in future needs through continued strategic financial management? Is that what we are thinking? Instead of the expand the city's fiscal capacity?
Mayor, was it the word management at the end? I don't know if others heard you. The verb at the beginning, I was suggesting. And we could probably just throw all of the, keep all of these words in here and underline them. But I was thinking manage, and then we have to do something with management at the end. But manage means we're reviewing it. We're looking at it. We're taking active measures, which may mean expand. Yeah.
You can't achieve this if you don't expand it. That's just the opposite.
That's true. Even if we said manage and expand, I think that's better for the community to read than just start out with expand.
Seems like we have a couple of comments.
Seems like we have a couple of comments. Someone will go over there.
I don't like the, personally, I don't like the expand if we just add it here because that's not being strategic or responsible if we're just going to expand our communities' existing and future needs through continued strategic financial management. I mean, we're... Exactly, exactly. And so we're expanding the needs and not putting the money to support it. So that'd be my concern.
We have a comment, Laura.
I was just going to say, instead of strategic financial management, could we say decision making?
Change management to decision making or?
Yeah. At the last financial management, you know, we had management twice in there, wish point.
Well, maybe we want to change the words around here and start out with use strategic financial decision making to manage our communities' existing and future needs. Like we talked about before, what is it that we're going to do? And then what, how are we going to do it is the second part of that, which I think it kind of was, but I don't know. I'm thinking that's going to be, I think the public would like that more is we're going to be strategic about what we do in order, in order to meet the needs. Manager. In that case, when we're talking about needs, it's going to be meeting, not managing. Yeah, my thought on the manage was how we do the strategic.
Use strategic financial decision making to meet our communities' existing and future needs.
I'm fine with leaving that there, but I think our community has different viewpoints on what the needs are, but we'll let that go.
Any other addition? Additional comments? We have workforce recruitment and retention. Invest in the recruitment and retention of a talented and professional workforce. A good comment over here.
Rather than talented, I like the word skilled.
I'm saying.
Invest in the recruitment and retention of a skilled and professional workforce.
I like, I like that because I could be skilled and not burn down. Yeah, skilled is what you're trying to make sense of.
I wonder if this is a place to put maybe a couple of more specific or targeted goals to meet that. I feel like that's so broad and it's so important. We keep talking about generally how difficult it is to find folks to fill the job openings and stuff. So I don't know if like in like the staff survey or anything, there was anything specific that we could endeavor to like prioritize this year. So like, I don't know, professional development, like invest in the recruitment and retention of a talented and professional workforce through, I don't know, like a couple of concrete strategies. I don't know.
But remember, the staff is going to put how we're going to get there underneath all of these, and we haven't seen those yet. Is there a way for us to do that? Would that help?
Yeah, I think so. It's just, I really, I've been reading a lot after my conversations, my one on ones with Stephanie about the struggles that governmental entities are having retaining folks because we know the pay is not great, the benefits are probably not as lucrative as other private sectors. So this is like a really big priority for me. So as long as it's somewhere concrete that we can see and be reminded as a council that while we're trying to meet all these other kind of public services type of things, that we need to invest in the people to be able to do that.
That's why I like the word invest because that could mean services or financial aid or whatever, you know, working with partners. So invest kind of is a pretty broad term there. And so I know that there's not a lot of concrete stuff in there. Invest says we're going to spend time and energy as a community.
Other comments around the room? As it reads, invest in the recruitment and retention of a skilled and professional workforce.
My only question to you all is, we've had extensive conversations about a right sized staff. Do we want to have any consideration by having the appropriate number of staff reflected in this provision?
This to me meant multifaceted, both as staff for the city, but also for the private sector also. So I think that could go both ways, right? We added like including city workforce or?
Wait, isn't this specifically about the city? Or this is like?
It has. We had that conversation in our group yesterday, actually, because someone said workforce to them means the community's workforce, but as we're talking about it, we mean city workforce.
Right. So maybe specificity. But I, to Chief's point, I think maybe even adding that level of specificity might be appropriate here of, because prior to this, we were, it was unrealistic goal to meet like the appropriate amount, right? Because it was like COVID and we don't know if we have budgets and whatever, like, but now I feel like we have more flexibility. So in like making it a concrete goal that we want to fill vacancies, you know? I don't know. I think that would be a strategy.
I'll kind of retract what I said because this does get back to the bullet point here. The goal is public safety core services on the city side. So I was kind of getting off, sometimes you don't have that headline above there. I was kind of getting off that. So thank, yeah. And along those lines, underneath that header, the first statement is deliver quality government services, which if you're completely undermanned and understaffed isn't going to happen. And so it's kind of maybe specificity is good, but this is already implied in there that we are staffed up to do this. Yeah, and that's why I'll get kind of dropped when I was getting that. I was, thank you, Chief.
But actually, you know, just to throw this out there, when you look at the next bullet we're about to get into for support services, we do specify city. So I think we just need to choose one way and go with it. Either we specify it there in both places or we don't specify it at all and just go with whatever the heading is. So I just, you know, wanted to point that out.
Other comments? We have workforce recruitment and retention. Invest in the recruitment and retention of a skilled and professional, right sized workforce. Invest in the recruitment and retention of an adequately staffed, skilled and professional workforce. Go ahead, Joe.
Well, I was looking under just for government services where, and this is the old achievement, ensure operations are funded for delivery of high quality community focus. And I think somebody said that earlier, is that that implies that we're fully staffed? And I think this one was just focusing on recruitment and retention, not to what degree.
Let's just leave it in there.
I'm going with that too.
I just think, I think it's important to like remind us, right, that we, we've had reasons, not excuses, to be like, well, you know, we can't really like, but now it's like, yeah, say, yeah. Well, not only that, but when y'all are developing programs, you need the right staff to be able to do those things, you know? So when you're asking us to take on new programs and services, we need to make sure that we're adequately staffed to be able to do those. So I think it's worth leaving it in there for that emphasis. So that's my thought.
Well, I think that plays into the retention, right? Adequately staffed, you're trying to retain the proper amount of staff to do it. So I think that makes sense.
That's a good point because I'm not trying to join a team that, you know, is missing like half of their squad because then that means there's going to be more work for me. So I'm not even going to apply that.
But it even goes more to the vacancies. It goes to even multiplying workforce if needed. So, you know, that's where the adequately to me, it can mean the vacancies, but it can also mean if we have to increase our workforce, you know, because y'all are asking us to take on more things, then that also speaks to that. So I just, I feel like that's a really good add from that perspective.
All right. As it reads, workforce recruitment and retention. Invest in a recruitment and retention of an adequately staffed, skilled and professional workforce.
Well, then one other thing about the adequately staff portion of it is, as Mr. Locke was pointing out yesterday when he was describing the demands that are put on staff vote from council, but also just the additional rules that everybody takes on because to hit 50,000, you have to take over lights and stuff. So the adequately staff portion of it is thinking of the future needs, like Chief was thinking, right, taking that right angle. So I think the adequately staff is important to stay in.
All right. So we're good as it stands? All right. Support services. Provide necessary resources to internal service departments to support reliable, consistent and effective city operations.
The only one that kind of, that's not part of all of this discussion, and this is one where I thought maybe it made sense, is customer service. We talk about providing good services and customer service is an important part of what we do, what staff does. And so I don't know if this is the exact place to put it, but customer service was another word, a phrase that was missing from everything that we had ripped down, that I wrote down last night. I didn't know where to put it, but this is one that jumped out.
I think that's probably going to go to core government services because the intent of the support services is because I'll just, I think they're kind of the unsung heroes and they're the ones that don't always get the acknowledgement. And so this is specifically looking at what it takes to support all the things that are out there. And so I think customer service probably goes under core government services. This really is to allow finance and, yes, finance, HR, IT, those folks, even communications. I know communications is outward facing, but they're also inward facing in terms of them having to serve the other departments in communicating their messages. So that's, that's the thought there on the support services. So maybe we look at core government services as maybe being the customer service aspect of it.
It was one that I had written down. I had forgotten about, and I forgot my notes this morning, but it was just missing and the services jumped out. It was like customer service, I had written it down. So it probably makes a lot more sense in the core.
And our core value is customer experience. So if council's okay, if we could use council and customer experience, that might be, I mean, that's our word that we use as a, as an internal city.
I hope that's what the public sees.
Okay, so we have support services. Provide necessary resources to internal service departments to support reliable, consistent and effective city operations. Comments? Good as it goes? And our last one underneath public safety core services and fiscal excellence is infrastructure management. Dedicate the financial and staffing resources necessary for capital improvement, project planning, construction, operations and maintenance. Comments? Thoughts on burning? Is it a good output? Mayor?
This is fine, but I'm just looking at, again, we're talking like kind of one department? And what about the others? I mean, does everybody fall into something that we've already talked about? The support services is, I mean?
Yes. That was the thought because we want city employees to be able to look at these and be able to feel like there's something in there for all of them, right? So the core government services, I think that does speak to a lot of the different, you know, programs. Infrastructure management, we didn't feel like it really spoke a lot with these other ones to CIP and engineering, to planning and development, to even Tyler, the utilities, you know, when you're talking about that. So it was, it was meant to kind of take that into consideration when we were looking at the infrastructure of the city, even the roads, the traffic department. So that's another infrastructure, important infrastructure aspect. And facilities themselves, exactly.
All right. We're good as it stands? All right.
And so I was just, you and I are thinking exactly the same.
So go back to core.
So go back to core government services. But where I added it was ensure operations are funded for delivery of high quality and customer service, community focused programs and services. Does that work for you, Mr. Gleason? High quality, customer service, because you want high quality, you want high quality to be customer service. And community focused programs, yeah. I was looking for a synonym for services to see if there was something to take the service out of there, but we can work on that.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, for core government services, we're visiting the first, ensure operations are funded for delivery of high quality, customer service and community focused programs and services. And we will play with that last service. Okay? Ensure operations are funded for delivery of high quality, customer service and community focused programs.
I could go with customer experience if that fixes this. I think dropping off, here's the deal, if some kind of drop off and services now, what was it there, why was it there before? No, that's not the question. The question is specifically programs and services was in there before. There is a reason, and I'm concerned about taking off the and services now. And I could go with customer experience instead of service.
And I agree with the mayor there because it's the programs and the services and the customer experience. So I think I like that.
We have a comment?
So a customer, an experience is what we as a customer, the outside looking in, not what an actual employee provides. They provide the service, we experience the service.
I'm fine that that's now the word that you use, but I would have to say from the, from this, talking about government services, the customer has to provide good customer services in order for the customer to have a good experience. But I'm okay with this. But S needs to come on, I think. And a comment?
Okay, so let's read it aloud. Ensure operations are funded for delivery of high quality, customer experience, and community focused programs and services.
Maybe it's ensure operations are funded for the delivery of high quality customer experiences and community focused programs and services, so maybe that's what we're missing, is the the.
But we've got customer in here, in.
Am I concerned, is services versus experiences?
It's not versus.
Well, so this is supposed to be for the employee's experience, or the customer's? Oh, sorry, I got it. So is this supposed to be the customer experience, our citizens, or the employee staff experience? The citizens themselves, okay.
And the survey that we actually send with our email, it's called the customer experience survey, so.
All right, how do we feel about that? Do we want to italicize something and look at it further? We're good?
Does, if you put a comma after high quality, does it modify customer experiences and community focused programs and services? That's an equation, I'm an engineer, so.
It depends on high quality is to describe customer experiences or high quality, community focused programs and services.
Okay, so if you want to do all of those, I can do it.
That doesn't work. I think it was good with the high quality customer experiences, just, because then you have community focused as the adjective of the programs and services.
Are we good with that? All right. Okay, so that puts us to the next one. Lunch is here, it's 11:21. We thought that we would take probably a 30 minute break, because we have two remaining, so do we want to get into this one, or go ahead and break for lunch now, and come on back about 10 minutes before noon?
I think we're distracted.
Okay. So do we want to go ahead and break here? Okay, let's go ahead and break here, this'll give a chance for people to get up, use the restroom, and how about if we come back 55, past the hour, 11:55, does that work? Well, we can do 12, I better say 55 after the hour, because I think we'll be back by noon then. I am getting to know, yeah, so we'll say 55 after, and we'll reconvene with our last two.